Thank you, A.J. I'd like to call the 6:00 P.M. work session for the Springfield City Council to order with roll call, please.
Counselors Van Gordon.
Here.
Mo.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Cher.
Here.
Woodrow.
Here.
Tishonary.
Here. Thank you. With that, I'd like to go right straight to the first item on the agenda, the cost and benefits of implementing in-car video systems with Chief Lewis, please.
Welcome, counsel. Are you ready for me to proceed?
Yes.
Well, counsel, okay, we'll get started right here. Thank you very much for having me tonight. I'll be kind of quick. Quick. I have 10 minutes, I think. What we're here to talk about tonight is the in-car video. And obtained some direction from the council, from you, whether we should move forward with it or not. And I think you received a council briefing memo on this, and I'll kind of hit some of the highlights of that. You also recently received a communication memo regarding where we're at with the body worn camera program currently. And as you can see, we're on pace for where we're supposed to be at. And I want everybody to recognize that when we ask for this in-car video, it's not going to change what we're doing with the body worn camera program. We recognize that's the real priority for the council and priority for us, and we want to make sure we meet those timelines. So during the body worn camera project, we realized, and specifically myself recognized the value of having in-car video to complement the body worn cameras system. And we recognize this from one, from talking to other agencies, some vendor demonstrations, and just practical use of it when we're out there on the street. We currently have one in-car video in our fleet. We've had for about seven years. And that particular in-car video, we've recognized the value of what you see with it, which you won't see with a body worn camera. And let me kind of talk about, you know, that here in just a second. But just to remind everybody, the main goal of us going to the body worn camera project was provide accountability and transparency regarding police interactions. I think this in-car video only enhances that a lot, actually, that if we have both systems, I think that transparency is going to be there. And to give you kind of a, just a quick example of that, and I actually saw this as a demonstration, and it really kind of hit home with me was they showed a police officer driving down the road, he had his in-car, or excuse me, he had his body worn camera on at the time. And so you can see, you're kind of driving and paying off how tall you are, where your camera's at on your chest, what field of view you see. And you can kind of see the steering wheel gets in the way and different things get in the way. And you can see a little bit of what's out in front of you, but really not that much. And then they show the same scenario with the in-car video. And you see the individual, you can see he's got a gun with him. You can see all these things that you don't pick up with the body worn camera alone. And one of the things that we run across a lot of times is people will have complaints that the officer stopped them for a traffic violation. And they'll claim in the traffic violation that the officer claimed I had, you know, I rolled through a stop sign. And with the body worn camera alone, you're not going to be able to capture that. With the in-car video, you're definitely going to be able to capture that and be able to show, yes, the officer was correct in the fact that he stopped you. Or no, he wasn't. And those examples would be out there. And so we've looked at this and really feel like it's very important to be able to add this to the body worn camera program. There is obviously the pretty significant initial cost of $170,000. And then the ongoing cost is down into the $22,000 range. And so my proposal is that that initial $170,000 cost, we utilize federal forfeiture money to cover that initial cost of the 170,000. And if you remember that, that federal forfeiture money has been out there for some kind of these special projects that we have. Maybe we didn't budget for it. And in this particular case, no, we didn't budget for this. And that's how I proposed to cover that that initial cost. And then we'll talk about the ongoing $22,000 a year cost also. The other part of this, and I won't get really into technical detail because I'm the wrong guy to talk about this. If you have those technical questions, Jessica is available to come online and talk about this. But having the ICB camera and the body worn camera be the same vendor, it gives you some efficiencies there that are done with being able to view the tape and some of the documentation and labeling goes with it. So that's kind of my presentation here in a real nutshell. And I just leave it open for some questions if you have.
Any hands? Sheri, followed by Mary Lee. And let her be sure just to speak out if you have any questions, because I can't see you.
So my question has to do with, well, a couple of things. I'm assuming then we have enough money in the forfeiture funds to cover that.
Yes, we do.
Correct. Okay. And then my other question has to do with the vendor. And well, two things, I guess. Cloud storage, is that going to tremendously increase the amount of cloud storage we're going to need? And will there be, you do indicate some costs for cloud storage, but that does, we also have cloud storage for the body worn cameras. Is that correct?
Correct. And so the additional adding the ICB on will add roughly about 14, just a little less than $15,000 a year to that cloud storage cost.
Okay. And then my last question has, what has to do with the vendor itself? And whether or not there are other agencies in the area that are using that same vendor? And so, you know, I'm assuming there is a way in which we can share. So if there were a need, for instance, in Lane County Court to have some of the information that you have here in Springfield, we can share that across lines, across the internet or whatever. Is that correct?
You're talking about as far as sharing the video file itself?
Sharing the video information, right. The storage information.
Yeah, that can all be shared. Just to, just so you know, though, the GTAC has been identified as preferred vendor in this. They do have some police departments in Oregon. They're mostly smaller agencies. So we did reach out to some in some other states to make sure that it was a positive experience that the agencies our size or larger had with them. So we did make sure that we checked that, that we could do that. And also, we did check with the district attorney's office to make sure that they were okay, because Eugene uses a different vendor. And the district attorney's office is going to have to access these files. And they are okay. They've looked at how they access the files, and they're okay with us going forward with GTAC.
Okay. Well, that's my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheri. Mary Lee is next.
Um, yes, I'm curious. The 170,000 plus covers the installation as well as the cameras themselves?
Correct. Yes.
And where are they in the vehicle?
They're usually right, kind of where you typically see your rearview mirror, the forward facing one, but they also have rear facing ones. The camera has, they see three different cameras in it. It's the forward facing camera, which is most your field of view out front. They have a camera that faces the rear of the vehicle. And then there's also a camera specifically for the person in the backseat.
And these, and they, all three of those views would be in each vehicle?
Yes.
Okay. I'm highly in support of this. I think this is a great, a great addition.
Sean?
Thanks, Joe. Supportive going forward. I think it's a good, it's a good addition. I knew this was something we were going to look at when we talked about, when we talked about body cams. The question I've got from the material sort of perspective, and when I see these updates, I really don't see how, like, I see the tactical piece without sort of any sort of flavor or story about how police are going to change their sort of approach now that this is a tool that they're, that they're going to use. So I know how the impact, it's going to impact. It's going to impact sort of DA and the city prosecutors. But like, can you talk a little bit about how you're talking to basically the whole department about when this shows up, what's going to happen?
Yeah, one of the things for the body work, if I understand your question, and if I get off base here, please cut me off. One of the things that we started with the goal of this project for me is to really minimize the amount of time officers have to spend dealing with the downloading and the tagging of the different events and all that sort of thing. And so we really, I think the people doing the, on the project team have done an excellent job of making sure that it will be a minimal effect on the amount of time an officer has to come off the street to be able to deal with the, you know, just the storage and the labeling and that sort of thing. And so we are telling our officers, there will be some of that as they, just like with any new system, you'll get more efficient at it as time goes by. Having the, having the in-car video does give us another option that as far as uploading without having to come in and actually put the camera in a storage compartment, and that's not the right terminology there, a docking station. They can be able to do that. So hopefully this, the downloading may actually go a little bit faster on that. The officers realize that, you know, this is, it's not totally new and foreign to us to have body cameras in the way we interact with the public. Right now, we have the one body camera, we have the in-car video. And then many of the other agencies we deal with have body cameras. So the officers are aware that people have cameras. And we also, we teach our officers that just assume every interaction you're having with the public is recorded by somebody, whether it's the police or citizen.
So I know it's a short item, so I'm just going to give you two more pieces of feedback. But when I see the material, like, I would like you guys to take about the next five steps, you know, forward on the, like, sort of the business acumen part of it, right? Because I know you guys are thinking about how much patrol time it impacts, how you make these additional investments. But I think there's room to continue to develop that sort of thinking as a way to reduce overhead into the overall, into the overall cost of the program. And, you know, that's important long term from a sustainability perspective. The other comment I would have, and when we started this, I think I said the same thing. Chief, you're the most effective spokesman for the police, right? Like, shoot a video, talk to the community about what's coming up with these, with body cameras. Give them an update, too. It's a little bit different than our, than our update. And I think that would be beneficial to, you know, the broader community.
And I totally agree on that. We, in fact, we've been talking about having some kind of maybe weekly or every bi-weekly report from the chief about something going on in PD, especially with the COVID situation. I don't get a chance to get out there in front of the public like I typically have in the last few years. And so we feel a little bit isolated here. So that, that's an excellent idea. And we'll definitely add that to our social media.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. And I have Leonard next.
Thanks, Joe. I, thanks for the report, Chief Lewis. There's a concern in the public that the officer wearing the body camera would be able to turn it off. Is there any truth to that?
Yeah, you can. We do have to turn them off on certain occasions. So the officer has to have that ability to turn them on and off. There will be clear direction and policy regarding when that camera needs to be activated. But to give you just one example of the time, you have to turn that off is if you're in a hospital and you're capturing, you know, medical situation. Or if you're dealing with a sex abuse victim. So the officer has to be able to control that on and off switch of the camera.
So that, that would be, that would be relevant to privacy issues then, like HIPAA related and and sex, sex victim?
Correct. And when, and when the officer, you think about when the officer gets out and just is on just a, you know, the officer's gone to lunch someplace, you don't want that all recorded and that sort of thing. So that is the, most agencies have real similar policies about that, when you have to have the camera on and then you turn it off. Typically, there's, it talks about the duration of a call. And when you know, basically, all the contact is done, then you can turn your camera off.
All right. Well, if there, if there are specific protocols in place, then well, I'm, I think the public will probably just read up on what those protocols are then. Thank you. And I'm in support of this program.
Thank you, Leonard. So I just throw you my two cents worth. Thank you, Chief, very much. I really appreciate that. I'm a strong supporter of this. Long time coming, way late, but still it's coming. And I really, really support it. I just wanted to add another situation where you didn't mention in regards to these cameras is that you kind of hit on it where the cameras will see things where the body camera won't. But also, there is a, there is at times a transition period of time where, where dynamic events start to evolve. And an officer, and this goes back to what Leonard's saying, that an officer frankly will not remember or have other things such as protecting his own life or someone else's life, where they're not going to even think about hitting that button. It's, that's, that's a secondary thought. But when it comes to survival, it's, they're going to do that first. But, but the beautiful thing about these, these cameras is that you got to, I think we have a much higher likelihood of catching some dynamic evolving situation on film, on video, as it evolves, and what may not be caught by a body camera. And similarly speaking, when an officer is involved and there becomes some sort of altercation, that body camera quite often is rendered useless because of that close body contact and/or it may be ejected off of his uniform or broken off. So this just, to me, is further enhances the ability for us to capture what is actually going on post audio and video, because I believe that there is some audio capabilities with that in-store video or in-car video. If they have a mobile mic, that I don't know if that's included in this package. But there's, there's small mobile mics that are available to couple with those in-car videos. But, but anyway, I strongly support it. And that's just another great reason to, to have those is what I just laid out.
That is an excellent point. And thanks for making that. And yes, the microphone is part of that system.
Right. Go ahead, Counselor Mo.
I agree. I hate that it's come to this in this world today, but this is for everybody's protection, everybody's protection.
Yeah, I think it's be great. I don't see how it's going to hurt anywhere, anywhere down the line. And I think officers are going to be very cognizant. It's going, it's occurred. And, and even the public's going to be very cognizant that, that it's occurring. So it's, to me, it's the total of 259,000 over a five-year span is really a small investment for the amount of of public protection and officer protection and city protection. And I think we can make that money back up in savings.
Thank you. So you'll, the council will see this again in, on the 19th in supplemental budget. So that's why we're coming to you.
Sounds good. I did see Sheri Moore's hand one more time.
I just wondered if there was a timeline for when these are going to be installed? Does it go along with the body cameras?
Yes, we're hopeful that it will. That it'll be in stepping in line with the body cameras at this point. But again, we recognize that the body camera was the initial project. But we're hopeful that we can do that. And we'll keep you updated with, when we give the memos regarding the project for the body worn cameras, we'll make sure we let you know if the ICB is going along with that same timeline.
Well, thank you. I appreciate your research and the fact that also you found a way to pay for it that doesn't involve general fund money. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheri. And I did want to, another comment, I'm sorry, is that Sean mentioned about a video, and I, and I think that that is a really important role that we need to take. And I think we need to be much stronger and perhaps even looking at a full-on public campaign, working with our PIO, Amber. So we have a robust campaign to show all of city, of Springfield citizens that these steps are being taken and, and really spread the word instead of being so, and beyond social media. Not everybody's on social media. So I think we really should look at that and see what, see what we can do with that.
We'll definitely do that.
I don't think the council kind of agree with that, too, hopefully. Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Excellent. Okay. Perfect. So moving on to our second item, which is the development code update with Mark Rust. Take it away, please.
Yes. Good evening, counselors. Can you hear me okay?
Very great. Thanks.
Great. And I can, I'll just leave my camera off unless you prefer me to have it on. So either way is fine. But so tonight, and for the record, I'm Mark Rust, senior planner with the city of Springfield. And I'm here tonight to give you a check-in on the code, the development code update project. And the last time I was in front of you was June 22nd. So this is considered your quarterly, your third quarter for the year update. We did send you a communication memo on September 21st talking about some of the related issues on this topic, combined with also some House Bill 2003 legislative updates from Sandy Belson and myself. So just two weeks ago, I did include that memo in your packet tonight for easy reference. And I will be just referring to that briefly. But so I'll just kind of give a quick spiel here and summarize what's been going on and then have time for questions and comments. So we, there has been quite a bit going on, both with the development code update itself, but also the related process of at the state level, the implementation of the middle housing legislation, which is referred to as House Bill 2001 and related to House Bill 2003. I am, have been working on the committee levels for that at the state level, as well as there was a land conservation and development hearing just last week. You were in, in your packet attachment. Three is some written testimony that was submitted from the city to LCDC for that hearing. Counselor Mo also verbally testified in front of LCDC last week. That was a great help. The League of Oregon Cities had put out a call to for elected officials from cities around the state to testify. And he was one of, I think, a small handful of elected officials. So that was helpful. I had met with the governance committee for this project, which you'll recall is, is two city counselors, Counselor Van Gordon and Counselor Mo, as well as two of our planning commissioners, to give them an update. And that's where it was decided that Counselor Mo would testify. So that was definitely helpful. And having that access to that governance, governance committee is, has been enabled the process to move smoothly. The kind of back to the development code update itself, we did, we had released a public review draft of Phase One on housing back at the beginning of this calendar year. We were ahead of the curve in terms of how the legislation was going to be implemented, knowing the rules would take some time to write. So we were anticipating how it might look to have the legislation implemented in that draft housing code. It is pretty clear now that we are going to have to pull that public review draft back in to make some changes to it probably to reflect how the draft rules are likely to come out. And so the, and I'm jumping back and forth here a little bit, but it's all combined. The LCDC meeting hearing held last week on the draft rules is continued until November 12th and 13th is their next meeting where they'll likely adopt the rules. So once we know what they do finally adopt for these administrative rules, we'll be able to then decide how or if we want to change our draft housing code to reflect those rules. There is another one last probably Rules Advisory Committee combined with the Technical Advisor Committee at the state level, another meeting next, actually, excuse me, this week, the eighth, so Thursday of this week, to take the direction provided by LCDC and make some final changes and adjustments to those draft rules. I would say based on our testimony, it's not likely that any significant changes will be made to the draft rules. I would say throughout the months-long process of the rulemaking, we have had an impact. And there have been some good changes made. As you'll recall, there was some of the previous ruling, which was likely to require triplexes and fourplexes on basically every single family home lot. And that has now been pulled back a little bit to base it on a size. So triplexes would be on 5,000 square foot lots or above, and fourplexes on 7,000 square foot lots and above. So that's definitely an improvement. It's still not necessarily where we'd like to be, but that's probably one of the more likely scenarios. I do want to just highlight one thing in the attachment two of the communication memo that we had sent you on September 21st. It's on page 17 of 49 of your packet for tonight. Or it's actually page five of five of that memo. But I did make a typo in typing that up on the year. I had stated that the year we had to have the work done by was 2021, June 30th of 2021. It's the first line of the second full paragraph. That year is actually 2022. And I just wanted to be clear. We'll have about 18 months to complete the work from the end of this calendar year, which is the deadline for the state to adopt the rules by not just six months. Six months would definitely be a stretch to have that done by. So we will have about 18 months to kind of figure out how we're going to respond to those new rules and incorporate it into our code. Let's see, the, I mentioned the upcoming TAC meetings. The, I guess the last thing that's included in the memo on the housing Phase One is, is I kind of propose kind of two potential ideas about opposite ends of the spectrum to consider for how we might implement the new rules. One is that we almost ignore the new rules and just do what we're doing and let the state enforce the new model code on us. There's pros and cons to that. At the opposite end of the spectrum is almost create a much bigger project than we have going now with our development code update. And that would be to revamp our comprehensive plan as well to support some of the changes that will likely need to be made in the long term. I think there's some opportunity for discussion about middle ground in there. And we'll have ongoing conversations with our state DLC representatives about how that might look, that we'll be able to report back to you as well. So no decisions are being asked to make or specific direction tonight, but I'm definitely looking for some input there. I just touched briefly here, too, on the additional phases of the project. So according to the timeline, we have been proceeding with Phase Two of the Development Code Update Project as well. That's the employment lands phase of the project, working on commercial and industrial lands and how we can streamline the code and meet the purpose of the project on those fronts. We have been working on revisions to different sections of the codes, starting with our minimum development standards. And we've held a, our local technical advisor committee, we've held meeting with them to get their input, as well as been circulating draft code to internal city staff for comment. The plan is for the Phase Two is to really try and push out a bunch of draft code by the end of this calendar year and have a public review draft for this Phase Two ready towards the beginning of next year to circulate and stay on schedule with Phase Two. So jumping to Phase Three of the project, we, we are behind schedule in implementing Phase Three of the project. The current timeline would have us starting Phase Three already. And we have not jumped into Phase Three yet. There's a lot of things going on and reasons, as you can all imagine. But what we're asking for counsel to weigh in on tonight is authorizing staff to delay the start of Phase Three, to really focus on implementation of Phase One and Phase Two, and then proceed with Phase Three at a later point when Phase One and Phase Two are pretty solid and moving forward through the adoption process. So with that, I'm going to turn it over for questions or comments, or I'm happy to discuss anything in more detail. Those are the high points that I wanted to touch on. And I can talk about next steps in a little more detail at the end, if you'd like.
Sheri?
So I had a question about Phase Two, the employment lands. From what I read here, you don't expect the state to weigh in with any drastic changes then, coming from the state regarding employment lands? Is that correct?
I would say that's correct. I don't see anything on the radar from a state legislative concept level for the next legislative session. Or I haven't heard of any conversation that would, in my mind, impact what we're trying to do in terms of, like it has for housing, I assume is kind of what you're relating it to. I don't see anything
Right.
coming along that may throw us in a tailspin on the commercial end of things, the employment land side of things.
And, and my other comment just has to do with this, reading through Phase One, one of the points that you made was almost having parallel code with the state and with the city. Was that what I understood? One of the proposals was?
Correct. Yeah, that's kind of the one end of the spectrum is, and it's a little bit of Correct. Yeah, that's kind of the one end of the spectrum is, and it's a little bit of potential gamesmanship or strategy, and it's an opportunity to talk about it at least. And it was just an idea, but one thought is the way the legislation is structured. If we don't adopt a code that is compliant with the state rules by that deadline, a year and a half out, that we will be subject to that state model code. It will, they will directly implement it on us, basically. And so one thought is we could go ahead and adopt our own code that may not be 100% compliant with the state minimum compliance standards. And then if we did that, then a year and a half later, the state would say, well, now that our state model code is directly applicable. There, it gets a little more complicated that in that than that because they are, it didn't start this way, but because of some pressure, they are allowing just portions of the model code to be implemented. So it's not an all or nothing. It would be that for sections of our own code that work in compliance with the state code, we could keep using those standards. So it would only be four sections of our code that were not compliant, that they would implement the model code, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it does make sense, but then one of our whole objectives in redoing the code was to make it easier to use for the public, general public. And so it's, it's a little bit, would be a bit confusing if we're expecting that the state is going to, you know, come in with mandating that we change after we already adopt a code that we know could be not compliant. So my other thought was until we adopt a new code, the existing code is what we're following. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So while I just, I'm, I'm a bit, I just have questions about adopting a code that we know, in fact, the state may contradict. And, and so that doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but I understand also that how long are we going to have to wait for the state to actually make their ruling? Is it by the end of this year? Is that what I understood?
No, it would be June 30th of 2022. So a year, a little over a year and a half.
So are they going to work on it until 2022?
No, it, so that it's all, the rules are all in place together with the model code itself by the end of this calendar year, and that's what they're likely to adopt in mid-December. And then we locally have a year and a half to either adopt their code or adopt our own compliant code with their regulations.
Okay, I think I understand.
And it is, I'll, I'll just say it's a valuable concern of what you're expressing, and I agree. It is concerning to make it more complicated. And I think there's some opportunity to talk more with the state, especially our local state DLC representative, and to figure out if we could essentially adopt our own code that is compliant to avoid the confusion, but not have to necessarily update our comprehensive plan now. If the state would support that, basically us being out of compliance with our own comprehensive plan, and that that would be the work that would be deferred till a later point and have to come into compliance later. So I think that's some of the middle ground.
Okay, so how far out of, you know, how much time and effort is going to be involved in the comprehensive plan?
Yeah.
That's a huge, that's a huge project, is it not?
Correct. That's, yes.
Okay, thank you. That's my question.
Thank you. I have Leonard followed by councillor Mo.
Thanks councillor Pashaneri. Mark, I, I got a couple of things. First, does, does staff feel that there may be problems with enforcement of phase one and phase two of our code update?
Thanks councillor Stare. If I understand your question, so you mean our local enforcement of those code sections?
Right. I, I, I'm, we're, we're considering whether to delay phase three in order to assess the success of the implementation of phase one and phase two. Is that right?
Yeah, I wouldn't say we would delay to the point of implementation. And I wouldn't say it's based on questioning whether we'll be able to enforce or implement it effectively. It's really more of a time consideration for me as staff to be able to get to the work to do it. And I think once we get phase one and phase two, kind of in my mind, into the adoption process, that is in the public hearing at planning commission, and then ultimately in front of you, this body of city council. It'll free up a little bit more of the tedious code writing work to then jump into all these other new sections that need to be updated with phase three. But no, I think the short answer to your question is no, we don't, I don't anticipate there being issues with implementation or enforcement at this point.
Okay. The, the other question I had was the, the state model code. Is there, are there any provisions that you anticipate from the state model code that staff is afraid might be onerous for Springfield to adopt?
Well, I think there are some provisions that are concerning for sure. And I did share a map with the governance committee. So councillor Mo and councillor Van Gordon have seen the map, and I will share it with this group in a future packet because we're still kind of finalizing it. But I think the short answer is yes. I mean, there, there will be onerous provisions in terms of the amount of middle housing that will be allowed essentially all throughout the city. So essentially every single family home neighborhood would now, you know, have the ability to build triplexes, fourplexes, you know, townhomes, cottage clusters, the different middle housing types. Pretty widespread, I think beyond what we had for sure initially contemplated, way above, you know, our existing density ranges that people typically associate with the low density residential zones we have. So onerous, onerous from that standpoint.
Okay, but, but you anticipate that once we had adopted standards that were short of that model code, then the state would probably step in and enforce the model code anyway. Is that right?
Correct. Simply put, yes. After the year and a half time, after June 30th of 2022.
All right, that, that's all I got right now. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Stare, councillor Mo. Yeah, LCDC has set up this model code for a lot of those cities that don't have the time or the money to implement this. And, and then they also allow the flexibility of a different code. But cities like Springfield, we're right in the process. So we're going to be able to take advantage of, of that flexibility. And that was the other thing that we asked in our testimony was that Springfield is different from all the other cities. All the cities are different. And we ask for some flexibility in the way that we put our code together. And I'm not sure how they're going to respond to that, but that was part of what we asked.
Correct.
Thank you councillor Mo, councillor Van Gordon.
Um, yeah, so I guess just a couple of, of additional points here. First of all, really appreciate Steve going up there and testifying, or at least calling in and testifying. Anytime we show up at state level, that's a good thing. The question that I really have is when we think about, we think about the model code, right? And Mark, I think you brought this up in the governance committee. That model code really is designed to give you a little bit of incentive not to institute a model code. Is that fair?
Yes, that is true. So I, I refer to it as punitive. And the state, the department DLC made it very clear that the model code is punitive. And so going back to what councillor Mo said a second ago is that, you know, on one hand, the state wrote this model code for small jurisdictions that maybe don't have the staff to do their own. But they're kind of almost punishing those jurisdictions because, and I'll use the example that I put in your, your packet today. And that is if, if you do nothing or choose to adopt the model code, you have to allow, and I'm going to focus on triplexes and fourplexes for the example. You now have to allow triplexes and fourplexes on every lot, period, regardless of lot size or density, similar to the duplexes, which the legislation was clear that you have to allow duplexes on every lot, period. But then versus if we adopt our own code, we can restrict the triplexes and fourplexes to 5,000 and 7,000 square foot lots. So to me, that's a pretty big difference of having them allowed on every lot versus limiting them to size of 5,007. So, yeah.
And based on the timeline that, that the state is telling you, right? What would be the difference, like the rules for the, the rules are going to be done by the end of the year? So if we wait before we implement anything, we're really only waiting to see what they are coming out of the year, right?
Correct. So I think what you're asking is we're waiting to see what the final rules are that come out hopefully mid-November by the legislation that have to be done by the end of this calendar year. Once we know those final rules, we'll have essentially the year and a half to figure out how to adopt them or implement them locally. And we can, we're already ahead of the curve on that. We could be implementing them well before that if we kind of keep on the trajectory we're on. I think if that answers your question.
Thank you.
Sherry, go ahead.
So I just, my thought was phase two, it deals with employment lands. So is that something that we can, it sounded like we're going forward on that. That for sure, we need to give, you know, developers, especially in our employment lands certainty. So are we saying that we can go forward and adopt phase two at this point?
Correct. Yes, I'm proposing to try and stay on track with phase two. And as well as continuing to make progress on phase one, you know, phase one has been delayed from where it was initially at the beginning of the project. So since phase one's kind of been delayed to be essentially concurrent with phase two now. And I think with requesting to delay phase three, it'll enable us to stay on track with phase two. And then as well as continue on the track we're on with phase one.
Okay, sounds like you're on top of it, Mark. And, and it's kind of like playing a game and they're changing the rules in the middle of the game. Is that kind of what's going on?
Yeah, and I would say we knew we were getting into this, you know, early on. We knew this legislation was going to change the rules and we were trying to, we were excited and we were, and I still am. You know, just every, you were joking about it's been a 2020 day. Well, it's definitely been a 2020 year, as we all know. But, and this project in my mind is no exception. It's been kind of that kind of a year just for the project and overall. But yeah, I mean, we knew we were going to be ahead of the curve and may have to adjust as we went. And so we made that conscious decision moving forward.
Thank you. Sean?
So, and Mark, I'm good giving, sort of delaying the phase three portion and sort of focusing on making sure we get something out across the finish line. Because I know this is a really complicated project. And I think it's worth noting that, you know, when it comes to, when it, when it comes to being really a forward-thinking city about housing and middle housing, we would be in the implementation phase if we didn't have to wait for the state, right? We're so far ahead of where the state actually is that we're actually having to slow down to make sure that we don't, you know, run afoul of state regulations.
Yeah, I agree with that. That's true.
Okay, Mark, is that everybody, anybody else have any questions? So Mark, so if you can clear this up in my head, so this is all for basically new development, correct, as opposed to pre-existing or post-construction?
Correct. If, if something already has land use approval, as long as those approvals don't expire, then that's correct. I mean, we're not going to go back. Although I want to be clear, I mean, this isn't just greenfield development. It would be for, and I'm not, I'm not sure if you're asking specifically about phase one versus phase two, housing versus employment land. But it would, it would be true for infill development, kind of thinking of housing. And it would also be true for employment land where say somebody wanted to expand an existing commercial or industrial site, then they would be subject to the new rules for an expansion of an existing development. But it would not change somebody that's developing now under the existing rules.
So a person, if, if, if a developer wants to go through and develop a community or neighborhood size project, they can still go through and put in however many single-family dwellings they want on each one of those lots. And then, you know, those would be permitted and built. And that, that this does not mean that someone else that buys that land or house can now go through because they have, because we have multiple lots in this town of 9,000, 9,500 square feet, just under 10,000. Because under 10,000, you can split the lots, two different tax lots. But let's say you have a 9,000 square foot lot and it's got a home on it. And someone buys it, this doesn't give carte blanche for someone to go through and, and throw a triplex on top of next to the single-family home, correct?
No, actually, I would say that's incorrect. It would, it would allow somebody to say buy a 9,000 square foot lot that has an existing home on it and say add a duplex into the backyard or, you know, convert that a house into multiple dwelling units. I mean, the legislation is specific about that, that they want existing neighborhoods to be, have more units in them. So kind of like we allow ADUs to be added in backyards today. It's going to go from allowing ADUs in backyards to allowing duplexes and triplexes in backyards potentially. If they can figure out, you know, how to keep the stormwater, deal with the stormwater and, you know, meet the other setbacks and stuff. But that is the intent, is to allow that kind of development.
So basically you can, you can create rental clusters in the middle of, of single-family home development?
Correct. That's, that's, yep.
Okay. And so I support, you know, concurrently working on phase one and two, moving forward with that. And it makes sense to delay phase three. I'm concerned about the, the cost to us that potentially can cost us. Basically, it's an unfunded mandate that we're doing. Is that correct?
I would agree with that. That's one of the points we raised in our written testimony to
Right.
LCDC. And I've, at these committee meetings, been kind of harping on this point that what they're asking us to do is unfunded mandate work. And there's just kind of, I mean, in my words, it's just a deaf ear to, to those arguments there. It's pretty clear from the state level that they want to force cities to do this density.
And is there anybody that, or is there anything that we can use or any tools in our toolbox to help get this funded and/or looking at it with multiple different jurisdictions and requesting by way of courts for funding for this mandate?
Yeah, it's tricky right now at the state level, I would say, in funding for sure. You know, we, we have been working closely with the League of Oregon Cities and other cities through that. I would say a handful of other cities very closely, Bend and Beaverton and Wilsonville. A lot of us have kind of grouped together to try and beat the same drum to get a message across. And, and again, it really hasn't been heard, I would say, or it's been heard, but just, you know, goes against the grain a little bit. The, the, the funding at the state level from a, from my limited knowledge of the specifics is that it's basically being cut. We actually had one of our existing planning grants that we had already been awarded. They came and actually took some money back from us that they had already awarded to us for a planning grant for our UGB expansion area. So they're not only not providing as much technical assistance funding as is needed, they're actually reducing even what they had provided. You know, I'm sure some of you have heard other funding stories around what's going on at the state budget stuff. We have, I'll just mention too, we have engaged with our state elected officials. We specifically reached out to representative Lively, Senator Byer, representative Wildy. And representative Lively specifically, you know, contacted the Speaker of the House's office, who was the person who put this legislation together initially. And we, we even went farther than any city around the state to try and push that issue with the intent, the original intent of the legislation. the intent, the original intent of the legislation and so forth. But I think you get the picture. But, um, you know, there really hasn't been a whole lot of fruit kind of born from those efforts. Although it did help, it just hasn't really got us to the point where we think it should be. And, and the funding isn't really there from my perspective. You know, that could change in a year or two years or, but at this point, I'm not sure where money would come from to help us do the work.
So maybe we can talk with our, our legislative committee and/or our legislative lobbyists to work in concert with it as opposed to just doing it one of the, you know, one, one approach or one phase of communication with legislature that we can look at different avenues that may be more effective. That was just a comment, nothing, didn't need a response. So. All right. Uh, any, any other questions from the council? All right. Sounds good. Thank you very much, Mark. As usual, your, your presentations are very comprehensive.
Thing. And if I could just recap, I think I've heard pretty clearly that there's support for delaying the phase three as we asked. So we'll move forward with that. We'll take a modification to our planning commission acting as our committee for citizen involvement to just officially amend that timeline. And then we will be back to you. I've tentatively asked to try and get back in front of you for an update in December. Depending on how that way pans out, we will be back with a communication memo at the very least to you the end of November, December to report back what happened with the state rulemaking. But thank you for your input tonight. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Okay, so that is the last item on our work session. The council meeting will start in about five minutes. So if you folks want to take a five-minute break, please do so. And close your camera down and your microphone on, but I would not sign out. Is Counselor Stare still on? Neil?
Yeah, I see. He is still connected, yes.
Okay. It's 7:01. Is Sheri on?
Sheri is connected. Counselor Stare or Counselor Moore, would you activate your microphone so we could hear you? We'll try to get them connected. If we could just get a minute, contact them, make sure they're hearing us. There's Counselor Moore. Okay, we're working through Counselor Stare's, um, microphone issue. Counselor Stare, try to unmute yourself one more time. Okay, Counselor Stare, try one more time.
Hey, can everybody hear me?
Yes. Okay, great. So I'd like to call this, oh, go ahead AJ and start up the recording.
You are, um, recording. We did not shut the recording off. So you are good.
Okay, thank you very much. I'd like to call this, uh, regular council session to order with roll call, please.
Counselor Van Gordon?
Here.
Counselor Mo?
Here.
Counselor Moore?
Here.
Counselor Stare? Counselor Stare, I think you're still muted. Counselor Woodrow?
Here.
And Counselor Pictionary?
Here. And next you have the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'll read some instructions for the audience. As we begin our meeting tonight, I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online to please keep yourselves on mute until you are called to provide public testimony. There is one designated time for public testimony this evening under order of the business or business from the audience. If you are joining us online with a tablet, smartphone or computer and wish to speak either of those times, please use the chat window. It looks like a speech balloon on the upper right corner. Please send a comment to the organizer with your name, mailing address and the subject you would like to speak about. You can select the organizer at the bottom of the chat window. I will call you when it is your turn to speak. For people calling in by phone only, you are in a list, you are in listen-only mode and cannot be called upon. The order of public testimony is as follows. Anyone in person in the council chambers, AJ will notify you. Anyone who has submitted a chat and anyone who has submitted email in advance. And if there's time remaining, uh, Neil will read emails into the record. Thank you. So the next item.
Counselor, the next item, just to confirm, Counselor Stare, do we have you?
Yes, can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Yes.
Thank you.
First item, counsel is Springfield upbeat. Item number one, Indigenous Peoples' Day proclamation. And Counselor Pictionary, you have that item?
Thank you, Neil. So indigenous, Indigenous Peoples' Day proclamation is, whereas the city of Springfield recognizes the indigenous peoples of the lands that would later become known as the Americas, have lived on these lands since time immemorial. And whereas the city honors the fact that the city of Springfield is built upon the traditional homelands of the Kalapulia peoples and recognizes the inherent sovereignty of the nine federally recognized tribal nations in the state of Oregon and all indigenous people everywhere. Whereas the city values the many contributions made to our community through indigenous peoples' knowledge, labor, technology, science, philosophy, arts, and a deep cultural contribution that has substantially shaped the character of the city of Springfield. And whereas the city is committed to protecting and advocating for justice, human rights and the dignity of all people who live and work in Springfield and vows to uphold the United Nations Declaration of Rights of Indigenous Peoples, the declaration endorsed by the United States on December 16, 2010. And now therefore I, Jupi Pictionary, Council President of the City Council for the City of Springfield, Oregon, proclaim support of the recognition of Indigenous Peoples' Day on the second Monday in October and ask the citizens of Springfield to utilize this day as an opportunity to reflect on the ongoing struggles of indigenous peoples of this land to celebrate the thriving cultures and values of indigenous peoples of our region and to stand in solidarity with indigenous peoples elsewhere. Encourage other businesses, organizations and public institutions to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day on the second Monday in October and commit to continue efforts to promote the well-being and growth of Springfield's indigenous community.
Next item.
Next item is the consent calendar.
Did you want a motion? Did you want a motion, Joe?
Yes, please.
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
Second. It's been moved by Counselor Woodrow, seconded by Counselor Van Gordon. All in favor by roll call, Neil?
Counselor Van Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor Mo?
Yes.
Counselor Mo, Moore?
Yes.
Counselor Stare?
Yes.
Counselor Woodrow?
Yes.
And Counselor Pictionary?
Yes.
Next item.
Next item, you have two public hearings this evening. The first public hearing is forming a local improvement district for installation of sanitary sewer. Ordinance number one, an ordinance adopting the report of the city engineer and forming a local improvement district for the installation of sanitary sewer in Crest Lane from 724 Crest Lane to 749 Summit Boulevard. Project P21171. This is a first reading only and Christina Kraz and Kyle Green are here for the staff report.
Can you hear me, counsel?
Yes.
Good evening. The public hearing tonight is to establish a local improvement district benefiting 789 Summit Boulevard and 749 Summit Boulevard Boulevard by installing a new section of public sewer line in Crest Lane. In July, you, the city council authorized the city engineer to file a formal report of the public sewer improvement. That report is in the packet as attachment two. The purpose of this LID, Local Improvement District, is to allow the two properties at 789 and 749 Summit Boulevard to reconnect to city sewer at a location closer than their current connection, which currently goes underneath Crest Lane through another private property and connects further down Summit Boulevard. If the LID is approved, it would allow the two properties at 789 and 749 to connect in Crest Lane instead of having to go under the street and through other property. In the past, when private sewer lines fail and aren't fixed right away, the city has posted properties uninhabitable until the property owner has the sewer, the private sewer line repaired. Because of COVID-19 and the property issues involved with this private sewer line, city staff have been working with the property owner of 749 Summit and the current occupant of 789 Summit to find another solution. Right now, both properties are connected to temporary holding tanks for their sewage. Right now, both properties are connected to temporary holding tanks for their sewage. The purpose of tonight's public hearing is to allow benefited property owners to object to the LID. Under the Springfield Municipal Code, Section 3.008, if two-thirds of benefited property owners file objections at tonight's hearing, then the city council cannot move forward with a local improvement district. Because there are two benefited properties, the council can adopt the LID if only one or neither of the property owners object. The council can also require a supplemental or further report from the city engineer if you find that it's needed. After tonight's public hearing, staff would bring back the ordinance for a second reading and adoption depending on council direction. The ordinance in the packet tonight will be updated with the correct hearing date and public notice date, as well as if any objections were filed. And I just want to apologize for having the wrong dates in the ordinance in the packet tonight. I had thought I corrected them, but somehow missed getting the right version in there. If you have questions on what the notice dates are, I can look those up for you tonight. If you adopt the local improvement district ordinance at a future meeting, then the next step after that will be for city staff to solicit bids for the public improvement work. Staff would then bring the lowest responsible bid back to the council at another meeting for council to award the contract before the work starts. Staff will try to coordinate the timing of public improvement work with any private sewer line work at 749 and 789, sorry, 749 and 789, so that each property can reconnect as soon as possible. After the public improvement work is all done, the next step would be for the council to formally adopt the assessment for each property, with each property paying one-half of the cost of the public improvement. Property owners are allowed to pay assessments over a 10-year period at the city's interest rate if they so choose. The city engineer's report has staff's best estimate of the cost for the public improvements, and it includes an administrative overhead required by the municipal code. The actual cost for the work could be more or less and the same with the sorry, the actual cost could be more or less depending on the lowest bid received and whether there are any unanticipated circumstances during the construction. If you have any questions about the process, I'm available to answer them. And if you have any questions about the improvement work or any engineering-related questions, Kyle Green from DPW is also available to answer questions tonight.
Any questions from the council regarding this first reading? Looks like we're good. Thank you.
Counselor Pictionary, you would need to open the public hearing.
Oh, I apologize. I like to open the public.
We have a couple of speakers.
Okay. Go ahead. State your name and address, and you're limited to three minutes at this time.
And so we have two speakers that are here in City Hall. Mr. Lager is our first speaker. And AJ is just setting him up at the microphone. Just be a moment.
Okay, no worries.
And the microphone's open.
Good evening. My name is Buyan Lager. I own 789 Summit. I'm here to defend myself against the city's plan to charge me $13,000 for legal access to a sewer line. In about March, just as a COVID lockdown started, I received a visit from Springfield Strong Arm Code Enforcement Officer Charlie Kent. Kent informs me that you can shut off my water, condemn my home, and then figure out how to address the septic problem. After that, I retained an attorney to figure out the onslaught of letters, contracts, and harassment by Attorney Kraz and Code Enforcement Kent. The first attempt by the city was to have me sign a contract that gave them the power to charge me between $30,000 and $100,000 to install a city sewer line on Crest. When I told Charlie Kent that I had legal counsel and not to come on my property, he shows up the next Friday at 4:45. I'm not sure what part of stay off my property he didn't get. It's odd that all the efforts by Kraz and Kent all come at 4:45 on Fridays. I put a holding tank in my yard for septic at a cost of $1,500, installed a spur line that I have a contract to replace at $6,500, and attorney's fees of $3,500. That's $11,500. And now the city wants another $13,000. The city replaced a trunk line on Crest approximately 21 years ago. They stopped 50 feet short of replacing the line that they now want me to pay $13,000 to replace. The map that Tom Boyett sent me shows that 50 foot further and they would have got the last and oldest line on the hill connected. My, they did not do it then. Why? So I did some research and had my realtor do some digging. We cannot find any assessed costs to 14 of the homes on Crest that we randomly picked, including at the time, the city attorney's homes. So also odd that Crest was the only street that was repaved on the hill when all the streets did and still do need improvements. I really hope this type of city-to-business and homeowner's conduct is not our normal operating procedure because it comes across as threatening and belittling. You should be embarrassed. I know I am. I'm asking the city council to install the sewer line in Crest and charge me exactly what the residents of Crest paid the city when they replaced their line 21 years ago. Nothing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Counselor, we have one other person here at City Hall, Mr. Alderman, to speak on this subject.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Tom Alderman. I am one of the owners of 749 Summit Boulevard. Our house is situated immediately below Mr. Lager's at 789. And his sewer line passes underneath ours. And so in January, January 9th, we discovered a sewer leak in his pipe just immediately below the boundary between his property and ours. We immediately called the city. It took the city until April 14 to inform us that the city did not intend to do anything to enforce its ordinance, but would allow the sewage to continue to leak onto our property from there to the street, to the river, et cetera. We called DEQ, who contacted the city, and I'm not ascribing causation to this, but as a matter of fact, the city did immediately, more or less, resolve apparently to enforce the code after all. And far from objecting to the LID, we support it. We want the work done as quickly as possible, and that is the only reason I'm here tonight is to ask that you expedite this process as much as possible because as Mr. Lager noted, our above-ground septic systems are temporary and they're very expensive. Ours is costing between $700 and $1,000 a month. So after April 14, after the city decided to move ahead with enforcement, sewage continued to drain onto our property until sometime in the middle of June, when our above-ground temporary septic systems were installed. I do have a question, a point of clarification. The 50%, as I understand it, pertains to the extension on Crest Lane. Mr. Lager's line connects to our private line below our house, and it's our understanding that we will share the cost of connecting from our house to Crest Lane, whereas he will be solely responsible for the portion that extends from his house to where it connects to our line. If that's not the case, then it's possible I might have an objection. But essentially, we just want to implore you to expedite the process as much as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else, Neil?
That's all we have, counsel.
Okay, with that, I'd close the public hearing and move on to the next item, correct? It's a first reading only.
It's the first reading and no action is requested at this time.
Okay, thank.
Number two.
Hold on a second. Gary's got her hand up.
So it sounds to me, before we have the second reading and enact this, I would like a little more information because certainly the objections of the property owners was not indicated in our packet, and to answer the owner of 749's question as well, is that possible that before we have the second reading, we could get some clarification?
Counsel, I'm happy to answer any questions tonight that you have. I've worked on this throughout the process. I would like to let you know that according to property records, Buyan Lager is not the titled owner of 749 Summit Boulevard. The titled owner is at the time the engineer's report was published was Anden Lager, who has an address in California. And then as of August 27th, the property was transferred from Anden Lager to the Anden Lager Living Trust with Anden Lager as trustee, so the same individual but different legal ownership. And so Buyan Lager, I understand, is the current occupant, but is not considered the property owner for the purpose of making an objection to the LID. We have been trying to include Mr. Lager through his attorney in our communications so that all the relevant interested parties are informed. But I wanted to provide you with that clarification on the legal standing and rights of parties.
Okay, so he had a question about whether or not the 780, I believe it was, is paying for a different is responsible for paying to the connection to 749, and then they're sharing the cost from 749 to Crest Lane. Is that correct?
So Mr. Alderman's question was regarding the private improvements, which is not under the scope of the local improvement district authority. Private improvements would be run through code enforcement authority. We did provide a notice of abatement to both property owners several months ago, which will allow the city to do the private work for them at a later time. It would be contracted if they don't come up with their own agreement or contract. Before then, the city would contract for that work with using public contracting rules to select the lowest responsible bidder to do that work on the private property on behalf of the property owners. And we would plan to charge the property owner 100% of the cost of their individual lines and to split 50/50 the cost for shared lines on private property. But that is through the administrative abatement authority process that the council has provided for in the code and doesn't require any ordinances or resolutions in front of the council.
And that, so in other words, the $26,000 approximate cost doesn't include that private installation, correct?
Correct.
So in fact, could be quite a bit more than the $13,000 to each property owner involved.
That's correct.
So but I'm confused. Is this was a public connection that failed, or was, how does that? What is that? They had a public connection to the sewer that failed?
No, their private line failed. They have a very long existing private line that runs from 789 south and connects with 749's line. Then together, a shared private line runs underneath Crest Lane through another private property and then reaches a public connection point in Summit Boulevard. And the parties have the option to restore that line, working with property owners and then getting an encroachment permit from the city to go underneath Crest Lane. Staff anticipates that would be much more expensive for the parties, and so we have provided this local improvement district option as one approach to try to assist the parties with solving the problem.
Okay, so the city is not responsible for, in fact, water or sewer lines from the house to the public where they access the public. Is that correct? It's the same thing. I think people aren't aware that they're responsible for the maintenance of the sidewalk in front of their house as well.
That is correct.
Issues with maintenance of private lines that connect with the city lines correctly? Correct?
Yes, all property owners are responsible for their private sewer lateral from the point it goes to their house to where it connects to the public sewer line. None of those are in public ownership, to which I'm aware.
Okay, so I sympathize with the owners. This is, I'm sure, an unexpected expense on their part. So what we've done is we have, we've said that we would allow them to do this through a 10-year contract for this district, this improvement district. But we wouldn't be involved at all with their unless they don't do the private connection. Is that what I understand? And we would go in and do the private connection if they don't do it?
Correct. And my understanding is that at least the owners of 749 are agreeable to a we call it administrative voluntary abatement where they enter into a, that's a contract that was referenced. Property owners can decide voluntarily to enter into an agreement with the city, for the city to contract for the work and then make arrangements for them to repay it over time. That's purely a voluntary, entering into that contract is purely voluntary and is provided for their convenience. The abatement authority kicks in if they don't either find their own solution or enter into a voluntary agreement, then the city has abatement authority.
Okay, so this temporary arrangement they have for a temporary septic system, is that correct? That's been going on for quite some time?
Several months. That is technically not permitted under the municipal code, which prohibits private privies or septic tanks of that kind. However, staff made an exception due to COVID-19 because that solution allows them to remain in their homes and not have to seek other housing during this current pandemic.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate you answering my questions. It was just not clear in the packet that we had some disagreement from the public.
Counselor Moore.
Mo. I'm curious why, when the existing public sewer line went up that hill, it did not go far enough to connect these two houses because those two houses existed at that time. So why was that not done then?
I don't have any information about that line, but Kyle may have some more information, or we could try to find any information for you. If it goes back to, if it does go back more than 20 years, digital information may be hard to find, but we can certainly look if Kyle doesn't know.
Hi, it's no fault of their, in that case, it's no fault of their own. They didn't get hooked up because sewer lines go in, you live in your house, and then the contract goes away and everything seems okay, but you weren't hooked up. You didn't know that.
Counselor Mo, this is Kyle Green. I do not have that exact piece of information, but I can say that those two homes were hooked up previously, and that may have been the reason why the sewer at that time was not extended. That would be my best guess.
That does sound logical. Anyone, excuse me, anyone else? Okay, Sean, go ahead.
Okay, so let me make sure I've got my head wrapped around it. So the issue's really in the private sewer. Is that correct?
Yeah.
And from what we think is to go to this shorter, to extend the sewer on Crest Lane is probably the cheapest way to repair and provide sewer services to these houses. That's how we got to this solution.
That's staff's belief. The party's still, I mean, to this day, remain free to figure out another way to restore their current connection.
So if they had show, if they had come back down to City Hall and said, hey, look, we agreed to repair the current sewer as it exists today, the whole thing would go away. as it exists today, the whole thing would go away because they were working on the current line as it exists today.
Correct. That would be a matter of getting an encroachment permit to restore it underneath the city street and restore that to its condition after they either tunnel or do whatever they need to do to get across Crest Drive underneath and then work with whatever other private property owners.
But from our experience, that's going to be a far more expensive way to do it.
Correct, because it'll also involve some reconstruction of the street and then working with other property owner.
Okay, but no, like, long term, right, like, we cannot, like, this is something we've got to fix because you can't just have the septic system up there for, or the, the temporary septic system up there in perpetuity.
Yes, my understanding is that it's also expensive for the property owners. So they're interested in finding another solution that is less expensive and also doesn't require them to simply stop using their sewer by leaving the house.
Okay, okay. That, those were the questions I had. Thank you.
Counselor Van Gordon, I just wanted to add real quick that this public system installation of it would save about three hundred feet of running through private, two separate private properties further to the south where the line previously existed. So that three hundred foot shortening of it and connecting it to the public system was what factored into staff's thinking of how to route this.
Um, yeah, the solution seems logic, like logical to me as far as an alternative goes. I'm just kind of going, there's a couple moving parts. So kind of thinking through it, you know, makes sense to me. So I'm good. Thank you.
So I just wanted to comment is that all of this information, I believe, how we got to this point today is a lot of information already provided to the council and the council agreed in previous work sessions, executive sessions, that this is probably the very best that we can find or come up with by way of the city that will help these landowners to come up with a solution that is amicable to the city and also to the health of that neighborhood. And so I appreciate all the work that Christina, you've done on this and Kyle, and I support moving, but I can't. We'll just go with this, the first reading only. So any other comments from the council? Great. Thank you. And I, moving on to the next subject, I believe, or is there any other administrative thing I need to do with this, Neil?
If you're good with this particular item, we have one more public hearing, public hearing number two, allowing temporary emergency shelters in commercial buildings. Ordinance number two, an ordinance amending sections eight point zero zero through eight point zero one six of the Springfield Municipal Code to expand temporary emergency shelters for the homeless to include commercial buildings and adopting a severability clause. This is a first reading and Sandy Belson is here for the staff report.
Good evening, counselors. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Right, I'm the comprehensive planning manager and bringing before you tonight a amendment to the municipal code that as the assistant city manager just shared would allow the Egan Warming Center as a temporary use within a commercial building. So as you know, we've had Egan Warming Centers in various buildings, and for one reason or another, they have not been able to continue in those buildings. And so church, we haven't found a replacement church. Then we allowed, last year, you expanded the option to include public buildings. And so we've had it at the school district administration building and then Lamalane's building, and neither of those are an option at this point. And so St. Vincent de Paul has worked with the owner of the former Waremark Building, and there's potential that that could be a site. And so in order to allow for that option, bringing before you this code amendment to allow an Egan Warming Center within a commercial building. There are a couple other changes also to the code that would clarify the role of the fire marshal in terms of approving that type of use, making sure that we're addressing the fire and life safety issues. And then also allowing it to start November first, should in the future, the warming center decide to start earlier than the usual November fifteenth. As you recall, last year, we had some very cold winter, cold weather at the end of October. And so there was some scrambling done at that time. So this moves that date a little bit in the, so that it would allow that as an option in the future. And that's what I have as a staff report.
Any questions from council? Counselor Moore.
I, I'm glad Springfield's stepping up to take, to help alleviate this problem. There's one thing that continues to bother me, and that is they continue to call Egan Warming Center. It's in Springfield. This is a Springfield Warming Center. I wish, I'm not saying anything to Sandy about using that term, but I just wish they would incorporate Springfield in there so we can get some credit for taking care of these. The other thing I'm worried about is, I'm sure we're here for the public hearing, is how do the businesses around there feel about it? There's a lot of room around that building. It shouldn't be too bad, but it still will bother them. And I want to make sure that whatever goes in there takes into account the protection of those businesses. So.
Counselor Woodrow.
Yes, I agree with Steve, and it's very possible that, that having heard from Chris McCallister on many occasions, he might have somebody that might warrant having the Springfield Center named after him or recognized that way. So it might, that might be worth a check in there. But I, I agree. I think that I like the idea of, of being able to approve a commercial building. A fire marshal is very important. I, the date, allowing the date flexibility is important, too. And the permission of the landowner is highly important and very, and very critical because it does hopefully take into account the other businesses and the other uses around those commercial buildings. But I think that's, that's an important and critical point to make. Steve, I agree with you.
Thank you. Counselor Van Gordon.
I'm, I'm glad it looks like we're now triangulating in on a site for the year, right? Because this has always been a challenge in Springfield. We've never, like, probably the last five years, it seems like we've been looking for a site all the way up to the last minute. Sandy, my question is, do we know, does St. Vincent's actually have a contract with the building owner? Or are they in the process of negotiating it? Or, right, or is this just like, are we doing the first part and then we'll get more information? Could you talk a little bit about that?
Sure, I believe that Tim Black is available. He was planning to be available to speak under the public hearing, and so he could speak directly on behalf of St. Vincent de Paul. If he's not here, my understanding is that they have an appointment with the fire marshal tomorrow to look at that building. So I'm guessing that they don't have a contract yet, but you know, that will depend on what the fire marshal says needs to be done.
Counselors, we do have Tim Black. Whence the public hearing is open, he would be available, and we have more caring as well.
Okay, and then I'll ask my other question, and it might be a Tim Black question. I know the last couple of years, they subcontracted out to get the, to get this done. Is, as far as the actual staffing and running, I'd be interested to hear, like, just a little bit more about that, what they kind of be, the operation to be. If they're going to do that again this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Leonard, are you still with us?
Yes, I am, Joe. Thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure you didn't have a question.
Yeah, no, I'm good. I appreciate it, though.
And I just have a point of clarification question, if I could, Sandy or Neil. Is this, this appears as though we are making a ordinance change, but it's, it's narrowed down to basically the discussion is on a specific piece of property, but it, it fails to address the rest of the city. And so I'm concerned as to some of the justification, of course, for the, for the Waremark store makes sense here, but it doesn't address other locations in the city where it wouldn't necessarily make too much sense. So what would be the plain devil's advocate? What would be the argument with people that are, let's say, a commercial building that is directly adjacent to residential neighborhoods, et cetera, that may cause some, some angst or at least a lot of folks to, where they wouldn't have opportunity or not think to have the opportunity to speak up today in regards to down the road. I'm just concerned. And Counselor Moore brought up a very good point, and I agree with him in regards to, I haven't seen or heard, or has anybody in the, in the vicinity of this building had an opportunity to invited to this or look at this ordinance and invited to speak in regards to their support to this type of ordinance change?
So Counselor Pictionary, the ordinance amendments would require that the, both the fire marshal and the director of development and public works approve that location. And furthermore, what, what you don't see, because we're not amending that section of the code, but the city manager has the authority at any time to stop the use. So that if there is a problem, we have total control. So it's going to require both the property owner and the city to approve the location. But it would expand that option for any commercial property that both the property owner and the city found to be workable.
Counselor Woodrow.
Do we have a capacity amount, I mean, I, I'm I'm envisioning the potential of a lot of small commercial opportunities. So are we do, are we looking at a certain capacity type building for this, for this ordinance? Like, they, they have to be big enough to hold so many people, and it can't have just several small shelters or warming centers around the city, at least at this point?
The code does not have a minimum size. In the past, there has been discussion about the need for a youth center, for example, that would probably be smaller than an adults only. So it doesn't preclude having a few smaller ones. But again, that's going to be up to whoever's operating it and what their needs are, and then what the city would agree to.
Okay.
Any other comments from council? Counselor Moore.
I want to make it clear, I completely support us in the city of Springfield doing this. I also want to make sure that, like I said, the site it is, there's a lot of room around it. It's open. But I also want to make sure, I mean, it gets pretty wild around these places, even though they're still trying to control it. I want to make sure that those, those businesses are protected. They need to be.
And I wasn't, I wasn't for sure, Counselor Moore, asserting that you weren't, you were against it or anything like that. I know you are, and I am too.
No, I was, I was trying. I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, yeah, I didn't want you to get the wrong impression from me. So, no, and I completely agree. It just seems to me that, that there's nothing built in or there's nothing in the process that really hits that integral part of a successful integration of that into a neighborhood of any, any shelter into neighborhood. And I don't see that, that, it just seems like there's a, a place that's not being addressed. And I just want to be assured that that occurs because I don't want to be part of a decision that says, yes, go right ahead and do it, and then have twenty people up at the microphone saying that, that this is terrible. Why'd you folks do this? So that's, that's the missing part that I would like to see taken care of.
Counselor Pictionary, I think that Tim Black can speak to the business outreach, but I will also chime in here and say that the police chief has assigned a lieutenant to be the liaison for this particular project. And so there's going to be a meeting that he's been invited to tomorrow to discuss some of the logistics, and he's, this is certainly on his awareness of potential. So from, we want to make sure that we're coordinating with the law enforcement, and my understanding is that St. Vincent de Paul will also be working with some of the surrounding businesses.
What lieutenant was it?
I'm going to have to look that up. Unless chief is on the line and remembers.
This is AJ. Chief Lewis is in the council chambers, and it's actually Sergeant Ryan Humphries that is assigned to this particular item.
So is he in the building or is it just the chief, AJ?
It is just the chief.
Okay. Thank you. So I, it just seems to me that I would be more comfortable if there was something in there that either, that places some sort of language that states that if this becomes an issue or safety issue or repeated safety issue, something that gives us the back door to where if necessary, we'd have to find a different location, but it doesn't appear as though there's any back door to this, or maybe I'm not reading it right. But is there some sort of code that allows us to say, okay, this isn't working very well?
Yes, I mean, the existing code gives that authority to the city manager to terminate the use. It's not excerpted in the part that is in your packet because that's already in the code, and we're not changing that.
Joe, real quick, could you clear, could you clarify that it's not, but the city manager could terminate the use without necessarily, like, having like a finding of state? Like, there's not a standard that they can apply. They can apply their discretion.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I guess then that would be a communication thing between the city manager and the folks and even advising this council, keeping the council informed.
We still need a public hearing.
Yeah, I haven't got, I've got, yeah, still need another public hearing. So now we're going to move into the public hearings on this code change or new code ordinance.
Counsel, we have two folks wishing to speak on this item. The first person is Tim Black, and Tim, your microphone is unmuted.
Hello, thanks so much for, for considering this. Really appreciate it. And, you know, Egan Warming Center started from some activists in Springfield. It was really born in Springfield. And, you know, last year, the Springfield site was open twelve times, twelve nights. You had a hundred and ninety-three unique volunteers work more than four thousand hours last year, making sure that folks were inside on those nights. So Springfield is absolutely an important part of our Egan family. Just to address a couple of issues I've heard, yes, we want to be a good neighbor, and we try to do our due diligence to reach out. And it's, it's not always easy, as you can imagine. COVID, on top of everything else, has made everything even that much more complicated this year because we have to have six feet of space around everybody inside those, which is one reason why we're hoping that this works out with the Waremark Building, because it's plenty of room for the capacity that we would have in Springfield. You know, it's different every night, but Springfield could have anywhere between sixty or maybe just over a hundred guests on any one night. And this would certainly allow that. You know, the model in Eugene was to have some smaller sites spread out and churches and faith-based buildings around town, but because of COVID again, so many of the folks in those places are in a high-risk category, and we don't want to ask and certainly understand that they don't want to have Egan inside this year. And it actually works better because of COVID to have a little bit larger site because we're also going to have access to fewer volunteers, because so many of our volunteers are in a high-risk group. So with a space that's larger, we actually can have a core group of volunteers work all of those shifts as opposed to having three or four or five different sites, because you have to have a minimum number of volunteers, no matter how many guests you have inside, just to make sure it's a safer operation. So we have a lot of unanswered questions, particularly in Eugene, how it's all going to work without our regular sites this year. And St. Vincent is really good at scrambling, but it sure would be nice if we didn't have to do Springfield site at the last minute, which is why we're really pleased and thankful that the business owner is offering this rent-free. And Counselor Van Gordon, yes, we would have a contract in writing of whatever the agreements are with the business owner. And I, if there are other questions that you had that I did not address, feel free to ask. But once again, I just really want to thank Neil has always been really helpful in helping us and Sandy and Aaron Fife. Neil has always been really helpful in helping us and Sandy and Aaron Pfeiffer and everyone in the city. We really appreciate it. These are our neighbors. And it's October and it's already getting cold and we know it's going to get here quickly. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Black.
Councillor, the next speaker is Chris McAllister. And Chris, if you unmute, you should be able to speak.
Thank you, members of the council. My name is Chris McAllister. I live in Ward Three. I am a longtime volunteer regarding the unhoused issues and I have been a longtime advocate for the use of the private owner of the Waremark Building to utilize this space. For the last four years, we've sought space that's hard to find, a place where unhoused people are allowed to be how they are, where they are. I have a couple of concerns that I would like to address and part of it's wording. I don't think that we should use housing the homeless in this item because we're not housing them. We're not even letting them stay there a full 24 hours. With that in mind, if we want to be able to keep the peace with our neighbors and our businesses, we need to cover day use and day services to be able to address the needs because people who are forced out of during the morning and have nothing to do during the day will probably stay close to the building in order to get their preferred spots the next day. As one of the people who spent every night at Egan when we were open last year, it's very vital that we engage people where they are. And if our Springfield people are not going to go to Eugene, so this is a beautiful thing that we're doing here. I would like to ask that we have some kind of say as advocates and people who are serving our unhoused on what the police looks like with our shelter. I think that any officer overseeing this or liaising with this needs to be trauma-informed, needs to be able to demonstrate that they can engage in a dignified manner with our unhoused people and treat them like humans. Having ran a shelter in downtown Springfield, I know that our officers don't always see our people as people or as belonging. And I would love to see Springfield churn over a new leaf. I have a lot of respect for Chief Lewis and I'd like to see more accountability from those who serve underneath him when it comes to engaging our unhoused population. Also, I would like to make sure that we are really networking and making sure that this becomes the last winter some of these people actually engage in Egan. Too many people have been there year after year after year. These are our people. We really need to be able to engage them in forward thinking and forward efforts. And finally, I would really hope that while St Venice is reinvesting in Springfield, which really does my heart good, almost all the services being Eugene time and time again, as a Springfield Shelter Rights Alliance member, we did have a say in trying to form some of the greatest things in our county when it comes to unhoused people. I think we can continue to do so. So please, please, please engage your community, find ways to engage the population and keep it safe and sane. And that means having officers respect our people. Too many people are abused by our officers who are following the letter of the law. Let's open up some more commercial spaces while we have to deal with these fires to work out temporary solutions. The county has a plan. We have a plan. Let's do this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chris. Any more speakers, Neil or AJ?
No more speakers.
Thank you very much. I'll now close the public hearings and move to the next item, please.
Councillor, the next item is Business from the Audience. We have several speakers and we have them here in order. The first speaker is Lauren Williams. And Lauren, your microphone is unmuted on our side. You'll just need to do it on yours.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. My name is Lauren Williams and I live in Ward Two. First, I'd like to say thank you to council, in particular councillor Mo. Councillor Mo for your recognition of some of the problems we have with the use of force in our police department as highlighted in the videos from the Thurston protests. Thank you to the other councillors who are having these hard and uncomfortable conversations about police accountability. It gives me hope. Please continue this meaningful conversation. At the most recent Springfield Police Advisory Committee meeting, there were many great points brought up in the public comment, all of which were recorded and can be listened to. Some of the most upsetting points were the continued evidence of selective enforcement by SPD, the lack of access to services that taxpayers are paying for, and the continued emboldening of the quote-unquote patriot group, leading to increased aggression and random acts of violence. But for me, the most disturbing comment was made by you councillor Pictionary, stating that SPAC isn't in a position to provide oversight of the Springfield Police Department. If SPAC isn't the group to provide oversight, then who is? Is there no mechanism through which council is exercising oversight over the police department? Please answer this question. Thank you. I yield my time.
The next speaker we have is Kevin Shaper. Kevin, just grab your microphone. It might be muted on your side, Kevin.
Hi. I'm Kevin Shaper and I'm a dad living in Ward Two. I know it's not the most important thing on your mind tonight. But since the last public comment, the opportunity before comes, before the October 19th work session, I want to talk about West D. For about 40 years, people who bike and walk on West D have been making do with no more dedicated infrastructure than an extra sidewalk space as their only connection to the River Path system. This lack of dedicated infrastructure creates the following conflicts. People who walk and run do not want a sidewalk filled with people on bikes. People who drive do not want a street filled with people on bikes and skateboards. People who bike do not want to navigate through pedestrians on the sidewalk or be close past and threatened by people who drive. And when I say threaten, I mean that literally. While riding with my three-year-old on my bike, I am regularly passed by drivers who make a point to leave as little space as possible, sometimes less than a foot. They are clearly angry that I am in their way. But my daughter was just two. One of those drivers pulled into his driveway immediately after passing with just inches to spare. My partner asked a surprisingly calm voice if he could cross the center line of passing. He swore at us, the two-year-old included. A project 40 years in the making needs more significant change than the designs shown previously to the Springfield BPAC. Speed cushions and pictures of bikes painted in the lane will make little difference to the driver of a lifted truck who wants to teach me and my child a lesson for daring to use the street. We have to reduce the conflicts and with only a 45-foot right-of-way and just 32 feet between sidewalks, this is a hard problem. I want to ask you to consider that a real solution could require either removing parking to create a protected bike lane or adding a diverter at River Hills to massively reduce the number of drivers on West D. I don't know which is the right choice, but I do know that either of them could be tested for a summer using only temporary materials. I have homework to assign to you before October 19th. And that's just to take a walk from Island Park to the West D Greenway some afternoon and get a look at the space for yourselves. Thank you.
Councillor, the next speaker is Shawna Hargue. Shawna, find you here. Okay, Shawna had to leave and I apologize. The next speaker we have is Thomas Lawrence. And Thomas, your microphone should be unmuted.
All right, does that work?
Yes.
Yes, it works. Awesome. I too would like to talk about the police council issue that we had last week, which is a great opportunity and I appreciate that you guys are willing to do it, but at the same time, it really feels pretty defeatist. We spent a very long portion of that meeting talking about how we shouldn't add more time to the council time for people to speak and I just don't get the point of that. I feel pretty confident that more people are tuning into these meetings now than probably ever before. And there's a very obvious reason for that. The obvious reason is that there's an issue going on and it's taking way too long to fix. It took what, four months, almost three months to get an independent councillor to check out the July Thurston protest? That officer, all those officers that are on videotape making a very clear decision on which side of the fence they're on, which protesters they are listening to and which ones that they have no problem coordinating with on camera. Those guys are also working. Nothing's happened yet. That's unacceptable. And there's a reason why you guys have more people tuning in now than ever before because we're waiting to see what you guys are going to do. And so far, the answer is we're just going to keep talking about a lot of other things. Body cams were almost removed from the budget earlier this year. We had to protest to try to make sure that didn't happen. I believe that is a great addition that you guys are going to do, but again, way too late. Things are happening on camera now from protesters and counter protesters and nothing happens. So I don't think there's a whole lot of faith that anyone's going to believe that having officers where cameras are going to change anything either. You've already seen the videos where you should have because they're everywhere. We could gladly show you some links if you'd like, but they're everywhere. You guys should know exactly which police officers are breaking the law, exactly which ones are watching people break their restraining orders as happened earlier this week. She was in and out of the protest. She's been arrested for assault multiple times now and no one's stopping anything. I would also like to talk about just the fact that all the people who so-called love this town, they're not in these meetings. And that kind of surprised me. I noticed that last week for the first time. They're not coming to these meetings. They love this town, right? They're trying to protect their neighborhoods, but yet they don't follow these meetings. Pretty clearly, we know who, what they're really here for, right? They're not here to protect their town. They're here to attack us. They're here to hurt the people who are trying to make a difference. And they don't come to these meetings because they don't have to. They don't need anything to change. Everything's going perfectly for them. They can do whatever they want and no one stops them. No one puts them in their place. Police officers just go hang out with them at their barbecue, which again was a comment made on video in the middle of the beginning of a protest out in Thurston, joking about the officer should have been over for burgers right before they started the protest and counter protest and surrounding all the people. Please take this seriously, you guys and ladies. This, this has gone on for far too long and nothing has changed. Nothing has happened. And all we keep hearing is a whole bunch of more excuses as to why this takes way too long to get any answers. Thank you.
Councillor, our next speaker is Chelsea Wilks. And Chelsea, your microphone should be unmuted. You'll need to, there you go.
Thanks. Can you hear me okay? Great, thanks. So hello, my name is Chelsea Wilks and I live in Ward Two. First, I want to thank those of you on council that expressed sincere compassion and empathy for their constituents at your last meeting. I'd especially like to thank councillor Mo. As a Ward Two resident, councillor Mo is my representative and I really appreciate you emphasizing the need to prioritize the interests of the people in your ward, even as those interests may change over time. Secondly, I would like the city council to, I'm sorry, I'm getting a phone call. Let me turn it off. Secondly, I would like the city council to publicly discuss the eight can't wait policies and compare them to the policies of the Springfield Police Department to see where we could improve. The same should be done with the NICS, the Six Policies, which would highlight where our problems lie. This process should not be seen as punitive, but as an opportunity to make needed improvements and to build trust between the Springfield Police Department and the Springfield community. And lastly, I'd like to request that the council amend the council's operating policies and procedures so that only the city and ward are requested at public meeting prior to comment. That's the minimum that's required by law as stated by the general council during regular sessions. And it makes me a little bit uncomfortable to give my actual address and I can see that being a barrier for other people who would like to comment as well. So thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you, Chelsea.
Sorry councillor, our next speaker is Chris McAllister. Chris, your microphone should be unmuted. You might have to unmute on your end, Chris. Just any luck with your microphone?
Okay, it said you were muting me, so thank you for working with me to make this happen. Newly-elected members of council, Chris McAllister, Ward Three. I'm speaking regarding a county project that we are working on this winter and inclement weather. The county has tried to carve out 1,200 spots to be found in Lane County to try and make sure that our people are taken care of throughout these cold, blustery weather months and not just have it be tied to a day here, a day there when it's really cold. When we put people out in waves and only take care of them when it's the most horrible weather and when we need the most amount of volunteers, we end up making ourselves have to spend a lot of overhead and a lot of capacity for what turns out to be a small drop in the bucket. So whereas we are looking at doing things such as the Ware March, it's not going to go far enough. And if we can actually carve out spots, say 20 spots, 20 individuals in each of your ward, we can start to take a bite out of the amount of people who are unsheltered this winter. 1,200 spots around Lane County. Imagine if every ward took 20 spots. We, as Carry It Forward, an organization I'm proud to serve with, have recently become car camp host. We have tried to, we started to act on some of the recommendations from SSRA, which we made two years ago regarding how do we help carve out spots for our people? It's by carving out spots with our community, taking care of abandoned properties, working on spots that need help, that we are able to actually get a hold of this issue. I fear that Eugene is going to outpace us with their shelter and with their one-in-every-ward-type rest stops. We don't need rest stops in Springfield, but we do need safe spots, safe spots to put people who are swept when the officers encounter people on the waterways. Where do they put them? Our officers are asking for places to put people in crisis who have mental illness and who are fighting addiction. We have waiting lists that are months long for those who are waiting to come off of drugs. Our people are tired of living in trash, tired of being deemed less than. And they're our people. They came from our mills, our schools, our community. There are our sons, our sisters, our mothers and our brothers. These are our people. And so let's carve out Thurston spots for Thurston people, Mohawk spots for Mohawk people. Our people came here and they're staying here. It's not because of the services we offer because we don't offer that many services. They're here because they love this town like you do. They volunteer this town and they're willing to build out. May we give them the support we need. May St Venice be supported, Catholic Commies supported, Looking Glass be supported, every organization that tries to meet people where they are. Thank you again for your time and have a warm winter.
Thank you, Chris. Next one, Neil.
Councillor, it looks like we have three speakers left. The next speaker is Dana Hershur. And Dana, if you'd be able to unmute, there you go.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
To comment. My name is Dana Hurkett and I live in Ward One. I just have a quick statement echoing a previous comment that was made. Last week at the Springfield Police Advisory Committee meeting, it was stated that the advisory committee doesn't provide oversight of the Springfield Police Department. Again, just wondering who actually does provide oversight? Is it the council? And if so, in what ways does the council exercise this oversight of the police department? I think this should be made clear to the public as it's important to know that all citizen concerns are actually being considered, especially those mentioned at last police advisory committee meeting. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you, Dana. And our next speaker is Patrick Colita. Patrick, unmute your microphone. You should have, Patrick.
Hi, my name is Patrick Colita. I live in Ward Two. I also wanted to make a brief comment about the West D Street Improvement Project to the council that echoes a comment I made to BPAC a few weeks ago. West D Street should be a critical link in Springfield's bicycle infrastructure, but currently it is a missing link. This is not a quiet neighborhood street where sharrows and raised crosswalks can suffice. We need much bigger change there. This area should have effective separation of vehicular and non-vehicular traffic. Otherwise, without that, casual and even Otherwise, without that, casual and even many experienced bicyclists will continue to not have a safe and inviting way. To get between the extensive river bike path system to the west and downtown Springfield and other points east. I see far too many people simply turn around at the end of the D Street Greenway and not see what else Springfield has to offer. So I hope BPAC will propose an ambitious plan to provide this critical link and that the city council will be receptive to it. That's all I had to say.
Thank you, Patrick. Council, it actually appears we may have two speakers left. The next speaker is Elizabeth Utterback. And Elizabeth, your microphone should be unmuted.
Hello, councilors. My name is Lizzie Utterback and I live in Ward Three. I want to talk to you about trust. Trust is something that is important to me personally. And probably to most people, yourselves included. I want to focus on institutional trust though. Which is a term used to describe the dynamic relationship between an individual and an institution. And is distinguished by the potential magnitude of its effect. In this case, I am thinking of the city of Springfield as the institution. Which extends to the city council, city employees and city committees. And then Springfield residents and visitors as the individuals. I like to think of trust as pebbles in a jar. Acts of trust add more pebbles to the jar. And when the trust is broken, the jar spills and many pebbles fall out. I like this because it shows that building trust requires a number of trustworthy acts. Whereas breaking trust can happen in an instant. I see city council contribute to building institutional trust by recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day. Responding to resident emails and public comments. And by starting to have hard conversations about police accountability. But as you can imagine, given current events, there are more pebbles outside of the jar than inside. Recently, the jar spilled as a result of SPD's behavior at each of the many different protests in Springfield since May. When the police barricaded protesters, brutally arrested protesters and stood by while protesters were verbally and physically assaulted by counter protesters. The SPAC committee chair spills the jar when he says that public comment at SPAC meeting is unnecessary because. Quote, "It's all the same thing, just in a different location," unquote. Signaling that the previously given public comment for. Public support for police accountability was not the type of communication that will be welcomed at the open forum the committee goes on to plan. I bring up these instances so that you can be aware that institutional trust has been broken. It is unfair because none of these spills were directly your fault. And yet you are the ones left to clean up the mess and repair trust with Springfield residents and visitors. I have some suggestions for how you can do this. First, council must exercise oversight over the police department. And explain to the public how they will do so. Counselor Pictionary stated at the 10-1 SPAC meeting that SPAC isn't in a position to provide oversight. If SPAC can't provide oversight of the police, who will? Second, council must not allow police officers to remove their names from their uniforms as Chief Lewis suggested at the 10-1 SPAC meeting. From his unfounded concern about doxxing officers. I'd like to consider that I have given you more information tonight. Self, just to make this statement than the officer has provided those things for the job. Third, council must direct and write the policy for when an officer can turn their body worn cameras off. Thank you.
Thank you. And it appears our last speaker tonight is Holly Shaper. Holly, you should be able to unmute.
Good evening. My name is Holly Shaper. I live in Ward Two. I just wanted to say thank you for last, the last meeting, the last public meeting to Councilors Mo, Van Gordon, Stare and Moore. Your expression of sincere compassion, empathy and support after hearing all of the public comment. Was really, it was really great to hear. It's nice to hear. That kind of understanding and empathy from, from those who are charged with leading our city. So thank you. I really look forward to hearing you continue to discuss difficult and challenging topics in public meetings. For example. It would be really great to see conversations about the following things prior to the end of this year. Police use of force policies, especially considering all of the mandated changes from both the new state laws and the Kenny settlement. The eight can't wait policy changes. It'd be great to see a crosswalk. With those in existing policy to see where the gaps are and then, you know, fix them. Routine updates about the required risk management assessment that's being completed by CIS Insurance. Which is also stipulated in the Kenny settlement. It will be really nice to hear sort of how that's going and updates around that. Also, the body worn camera and the in-car camera policy. Hopefully council takes the lead in drafting that policy. Ideally, council should be providing guidance to and oversight of the Springfield Police Department. That reflects the needs and expectations of this community. The council should be ensuring that the culture and rules guiding the police department are consistent with these expectations. A good start again would be a public review of police policy and police use of force guidelines to ensure that they are aligned with the expectations of city leadership and their constituents. Finally, I just had one small request as council discusses their operating procedures and policies next week. Please stop asking people for their addresses and forcing them to dox themselves. You know, we learned from general counsel at a meeting that only word is required, so please, please do not request. Address. It's a significant safety concern and an unnecessary barrier to public comment. So, thank you.
Thank you, Holly. Is that the last speaker?
Counsel, we do not have anyone else here at City Hall and it appears all the speakers that asked to speak have spoken.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm closing the business from the audience and moving on to the next item.
Council, the next item is bids. Item A, a bid award for project P21157 Mohawk and Olympic Overlay. Tonight, this presentation will be given to you by Tom Boyott and Christie Kruger.
Neil?
Yes.
Can I jump in there? There's one item there. It's on council response to business from the audience we didn't address and I, and I would like to make a response if I could, please. It's. Obviously, there was a misunderstanding when I stated that the, that committee doesn't have oversight. I also included, which I don't know if people caught. Or didn't want to catch, but it's the committee itself is not the same as a lot of folks understand the committee as a police commission. Which is, which is different, separate entity and usually always separated from the police agency and doing their own oversight, very much like Eugene. So that's, that's the only context that I, that I was referring to, so please don't misunderstand me. And it doesn't mean that, that we don't, that we don't need to look in that area, but, but I was just trying to explain what the charge of that particular committee was. Not implying that there shouldn't be oversight. So please understand that. Thank you.
Counsel, I apologize for skipping that. Is there any other counsel?
No worries. It looks like Sheri's got her hand up.
So I also wanted to comment about oversight. And there is oversight at the police department and. We as a council are responsible for hiring the city manager who does in fact oversee. The other department heads and the departments and. Also, any, any situation can come to the council as well. So it's not that the police department. Functions without oversight. Certainly does have oversight, but I hear what they're saying about police commission and I think. Commission rather than right now what we have as an advisory committee. So that's one of the issues that I think we as a council are working on. And I appreciate their people bringing that forward. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Councilmore. And that's exactly what I'm saying too is, is being misunderstood and please, please know that. But go ahead, Councilman Gordon. I'm sorry, my microphone muted.
I was like, maybe he's calling me or maybe he's not. I'm just gonna echo what you guys were saying, like. From an accountability and oversight perspective, right? Like, there's definitely. You know, you definitely have a form in front of the council. Most org charts the city produces starts with the public and it goes down through council and then down to the city manager from there. So like, obviously, like, anything that's a city government, part of the city government has oversight inherently built into it. It flows through everybody to the city manager and then to the police department. Though, I did hear one thing that I would love to see a response to from the police department. And that was that just, and it could be in a communication memo. It doesn't have to be now, is to crosswalk that eight can't wait. I know we kind of kicked it around for a while, but you know, I'm sure some of that stuff we do, some of the stuff we don't do. I would be interested in hearing, what do we do? What do we don't? And the sort of why behind it?
Thank you, Sean. And of course, now that we're thinking about this, I'm starting to reflect on a lot of things that were said and I do want to look into. Sorry, I guess this is why they have meetings. The comments about regards to name and address, and I think. Several, I can't remember exactly who, and I know that Holly brought it up and I think possibly. Lauren did. In regards to stating your name and address, I, I think we've. I don't know if anybody disagrees, but I think indicating what ward is, is, I'm okay with. But I know that there may be, it's an indication, it's in the council. Rules or operated procedures. And I'm thinking that Mary Bridget is online here, but. I'd like to just go ahead and put that out there and if I get some disagreement, just a head nods to look at allowing that and become part of the instructions for. The audience to just indicate their name and the ward from which they live. And I'm okay with that. That makes sense to me. I'm, I'm about safety and that. And I'd like to see, I don't want to see people being discouraged to speak. Just because they don't want to put their name out or their address out. And I get it. I totally get that. So. Any, everybody else good with that? And Mary Bridget, can we move forward with that or is that something that's going to be difficult or some sort of state law we're running contrary to?
Counselor Pictionary, this is Mary Bridget. I believe that change is part of the draft changes that are coming forward to the council next week. So we can officially take care of that. For operating policies and procedures. And then in the meantime, if someone is not comfortable providing their address, you can still take their testimony.
Okay, and I think we can just move with that, at least allowing that. And then, and I do remember that conversation I had with, when we. Looked at those amendments with Mayor Lundberg at the time when, when we did that. So, okay, great. Enough of the comments from council response, sorry. Oh, Sheri, go ahead.
Also, there was the, I believe there was a protest and I was trying to find the information that said Wednesday night. I'm not sure. But I listened to. The. Wow. Black Slides Matter Speaker at the city club meeting who indicated. That their last protest in Springfield, which I. I'm not sure what the date was, but maybe Wednesday and maybe the police chief is online could answer that, but. Indicated that it was a much better response from the police department that they. That there were both protesters and counter protesters present, but that they felt like they received a. A good response from the Springfield Police Department in protecting each group from one another. And so. I just wanted to commend the Springfield Police Department for doing a good job in that situation, which again, I'm not sure what date that was. But. Was it Wednesday? Okay, I saw it. It was, I thought, oh, that's strange on a Wednesday night. Thank you, Mary. But anyway, thank you. And thank you for the protesters and even the counter protesters who came out, but apparently were respectful of one another and their differences.
Wait, wait.
Go ahead, Sean.
Sorry, like. I've seen some of the footage, right? Like, and you know, I, I did see the part of the city club where they did emphasize that, like, you saw a lot more mixing between. The PD between two forces and between not two forces, right? Like, and I. I'm going to freely admit that I have not seen all footage that exists every place, right? Did see somebody use what appeared to be. You know, bear mace or verbally harass people. And I just want to say that's unacceptable. Right? Like from, like, we should be able to, we're a free country in a politically diverse. Country, we should be able to go out and exercise our first amendment rights without sort of fear, sort of physical assault by people. And I just want to make sure that we're clear that there were, people were misbehaving, right? Like, and I hope, right? Like, and I know that there's a whole process and. You know, the police are looking at it, but it was not acceptable.
Right. That is correct. And that was discussed at the, at the S, the Springfield Advisory Committee meeting that, that subject came up. So I think we're ready to move on. Head nods. Oh, Counselor Mo, your turn. I want the people out there to notice that the public testimony tonight, we listened to. And there was already started to make a change by eliminating addresses. When they testified. So we listen and that's a small thing, but we do do things. Thank you, Steve. Okay, Neil, take it away, please.
All right, and thank you. The next item now then is the bids and we have one item under this heading. It's bid award for project P21157. That's the Mohawk and Olympic Overlay. It does say Jeff Pascal and Tom Boyott, but the speakers tonight will be Tom Boyott and Christie Kruger.
Good evening, council. This is Tom and I, it looks like you can hear me.
We can.
Fantastic. This, this bid award, we thought it'd be a, a nice idea to take this off the consent agenda. This is, and just talk to you just a little bit about. The bond projects, the street, the street bond projects from. Exactly or within one day of, one year and 11 months ago. When the Springfield voters approved the $10 million bond to repair street segments. The first assessment kicked in July of last year, so we're just over a year in the assessment. And we've made significant progress on the project list and Christie's going to get into some of those details for you here in just a minute. We are, have either programmed or committed more than half of the $10 million. We've got some pretty big projects coming up. These next three, and you can see that here with Mohawk and Olympic being a $3.2 million job. Do want to say we had a favorable bidding climate and we're looking forward to seeing some good bids on a couple of the other projects. Here and there, we have discovered deeper base failure than we were anticipating, although. I think we were as clear as we could be, Councilors Mo, Stare and, and Van Gordon. In letting the public know that, you know, we really wouldn't know what was going on until we got in and looked at it. But the program's going really well and I would like to take this opportunity to turn the mic over to Christie Kruger. Who is our managing civil engineer over the city's capital program, which includes these street projects. And, and before Christie kicks in, happy to answer any questions that you have. If those come up.
Good evening. Can you hear me? This is Christie Kruger.
And here you find, Christie.
Perfect. I just wanted to give you a quick update on our bond projects that are on the list. We went to construction and completed construction for 14th Street as well as commercial. We right now are looking at the Mohawk Overlay project and Olympic Overlay project requesting to accept the bid tonight. We have HyBinks and Thurston Road overlays as well as a little portion of 58. And that is at 100% design right now and we are reviewing that as we speak. We have the 42nd Overlay and that is at about 95% design and we will be reviewing that. To, I should back up for a second. The HyBinks and Thurston project, we are trying to get that out to bid by the end of this year. So then the 42nd one, as I just mentioned, is at about 95% design and we'll be moving forward with that. And we'll put that out to bid after we do the HyBinks and Thurston bid. And then we have the final project of Centennial Boulevard, a little over 60% design. So we are very excited. We've been working very hard in our designs and trying to get our projects out to construction as soon as possible.
Thank you, Christie. Is there any questions, comments from council? Thank you, Christie. Is there any questions, comments from council? Yes, go ahead, Councilman Gordon.
Well, I'm glad we finally got to the transportation part of the meeting because we were going to keep pushing it off till the absolute. And thank you. Not like, I know that this was a huge ask that we had out a couple of years back for the, for the community to start really working on the road backlog. And I just, I appreciate hearing the updates and communicating it to the community because we're, there's still a lot of transportation work to be done. And people seeing results of their money is, is always a good thing.
Yes, very much so. I echo that. And it looks like because of the cost savings and what was the engineer's extended unit price estimate versus what it came in on, saved us enough money to maybe we can do another project that we didn't anticipate. Is that correct, Tom?
Well, I, Counselor, I, I just add a note of caution. I think what I was referring to earlier is that there is the potential that we will have to do a little bit more work on some of these jobs. So we're cautiously optimistic. Certainly it's our goal to bring this in under 10 million. But until we really dig in, we're, we're not completely sure how a project's going to go. If we do come in under the 10 million, we have already, or I should say you, the council has already pre-identified the next two projects that we would move towards. You intentionally built flexibility into that bond request. Just given the nature of streets and street work, it's always a good idea to have a little bit of a plan B going in. But yeah, I, I would really love to be back here reporting how we came in at 9 million five and we're heading on to the next project.
That's awesome. So I, just for that project, I'm just going to blurt it out there because I've said it before. On that southbound Mohawk traffic as it approaches Olympic, there is a eastbound turn lane that has got enough room for about two and a quarter vehicles that because of a concrete barrier in that area that is, appears to have no purpose whatsoever other than providing traffic separation, I'm hoping, because it also has an old island there and a dedicated turn on the, on the south or on the northbound Mohawk into some parking lots that are no longer used. Hopefully that section through there is going to allow many more vehicles to queue up that are southbound, trying to get onto eastbound Olympic. And you don't have to explain. I just put that out there for public record because I want to see the signs later.
Yes, you are actually correct in that we did update those islands. And so now there will be much more room for those southbound left turn vehicles.
That's awesome because that's a huge safety issue is those vehicles stick out. And I know that there's water plumbed up underneath that one island and whatnot. So just far as I'm concerned, cap it off. Thank you so much.
Yes.
I think, yeah, we just, yes, we do.
Okay, I move to approve the bid award for project P two one one five seven, Mohawk and Olympic overlay.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved by Counselor Woodrow, seconded by Counselor Van Gordon, all in favor by roll call vote?
Counselor Van Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor Mo?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Counselor Stare? Counselor Stare? He may have problems with his microphone. Counselor Stare, you are self-muted. Counselor Woodrow?
Yes.
Counselor Pictionary?
I'm in favor and I was just going to check with Counselor Stare real quick by text. I don't see that he even saw that. So I think we, we've got a majority and we just count him as absent. Oh, I got a yes out of him. So it's unanimous. There it is.
I'm going to check real quick with Mary Bridget. Mary Bridget, do we need to have Counselor Stare on his microphone?
Can I show it?
If there's a roll call vote, if there's any way we can get him to affirm his vote so we can hear it for the record.
What is, would me showing you my screen work, Mary Bridget?
I don't, is he just unable to?
Hold on, I think we have him.
Yeah, thank you. My, my vote was yes on this.
There you go.
There you go. So now I can call that unanimous, correct, Neil?
Correct.
All right. Motion passes unanimously. Next item.
Any business city council?
Oh, there's Sherri. Go ahead, Sherri.
Okay, thank you. I just needed to let you know that last year I had served on the statewide transportation improvement fund advisory committee. It's called the STIF for short. And that committee is headed up by the Lane Council of Governments. And we're meeting tomorrow at 3:30 via a go-to-meeting, go-to-meeting, right, dot com. It is a public meeting, so people can phone in and listen in. And it is funds that are, the state, I think it was two years ago, initiated a dedicated source of funding for expanding public transportation. It is a 0.1% employee payroll tax. I don't know at this point in time how much money that involves, but anyway, I will be attending that meeting. And I will send the, I'm sorry, I didn't do this earlier, but I will send the council information about that meeting. So if you're interested in listening in. And then the only other thing I wanted to say was a thank you to Nancy for hiring Rick Brazil as an independent investigator for the Thurston protests and for also including all of his qualifications. He sounds imminently qualified to do this. So I wanted to personally thank her for doing that.
Counselor Mo?
Hold on, I don't, I don't remember what I was going to say. I, it's moving slowly. But I know, I want people to know that the council is taking very seriously trying to look into these police issues and public safety issues for minorities and everybody. And so I'm part of that. I'm trying to push it. I'm really strong on, on trying to move ahead on it. So I want them to know that. And then today, something bothered me. A friend of mine walked into my office, he had a sidearm on pistol. Second amendment is fine. I asked him, I says, why do you have that? What are you carrying that around for? He says, for my protection. I was like, crisis, protection from what? What's the matter with you? Would you come back here? Please don't wear that gun. Leave it somewhere, someplace else. So I, it just really bothered me. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mo. Anyone else? Okay, moving on. Go ahead, Counselor Van Gordon.
Well, if we had Leonard first, I think I heard him yell too.
Okay. Counselor, Counselor Stare, go for it.
Yes. Thank, thank you, Counselor Van Gordon. I wanted to thank all of the artists who participated in Mary's art show.
Counselor Stare, if you can hear me, we, we lost you just after the first couple of words. Can you try it again, please? Or maybe, oh, there you go. That's better.
I, I wanted to thank all of the artists who participated in the Mary's Art Show at the Emerald Art Center last weekend. There were an unusually high number of artists and also a, an unusually high quality to all the work that was presented. Who participated in also everybody.
Thank you. I think we got the gist of that as far as the art center. Thank you. Counselor Van Gordon, go ahead.
I guess one kind of response for Sherri about the STIF funding. Look, I know you're going to go to the committee and you're going to learn a ton more and sort of advocate for interest. The thing I would encourage feedback for is to find places where citizens can actually see results from that money. It's coming out of their payroll. And I don't know that we, like, we funded all projects where people can actually see, you know, tangible results for the money that they paid. And that would be an important focus for me.
Yes, I will definitely do that.
Joe and I had NPC last week. It just also came up on OMPAC. I'm going to try to get the presentation and see if anybody else is interested in it. There's a lot of conversations coming out of ODOT right now about the climate change office. And they saw that, and they sort of showed us the first piece of information. It's similar, the response Joe, Joe and I gave was very similar to what we had with HB 2001, which was we were essentially saying, just provide enough flexibility in anything that we're doing that we, you know, we can be a separate city. We can find different ways to get to our own outcomes. But, you know, don't say, don't take this is one size fits all when it comes to transportation planning. One, the other, one conversation that I did want to point out, I know that, you know, in 2020, right? Like our Lane County COVID cases are sort of on the rise. I know the county is talking about that because we're, I don't know if we're on the watch list or not, you know, from the governor or not on the watch list. But I would really love to get an update if somebody has it from, from the county commission meeting tomorrow. Because I'm getting a briefing. I know that they're getting a briefing.
Yeah, and actually, Sean, those numbers came out earlier this week. We had a press conference. And I think I probably interrupted Neil. He's got, we've got some fairly recent information, but it's changing every day.
Yeah.
Yeah, Counselor, you didn't interrupt. I just wanted to let you know that both city manager Nancy Newton and I were on a call today with the county. And we will definitely provide the latest information that we get from that county commission meeting. But they did see quite a rise over the weekend and they're working very hard to keep those numbers down and keep us in phase two.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. And that's, and I think that's the other point. Like, there's a bunch of conversations going on about COVID. I know that Joe, you're going. I know the staff is going to a lot of parts, but as a community, we have to do our part, you know, to protect our, our businesses if they're downtown in Gateway or Thurston, to make sure that we stay in phase two. The last question that I had was videos from meetings. Is this something that kind of comes up and percolates when, you know, in conversations in the community? Could we, like, the interface to download the video to this meeting is, you know, a little bit on the clunky side? And I don't know if we really have a standard way to do that. Like, could we just simply put this on YouTube instead of having people have to unbury or, you know, hunt through the city Springfield website?
Counselor Van Gordon, we can look at, we can look at that and get back with the council.
That would be great. Thank you.
And Counselor Woodrow?
I heard just a, just a brief information today regarding a concern about people redeveloping and getting their houses back into the fire areas. That there was a concern on the part of environmentalists or whoever, I'm not sure which group it was that was concerned. But the, the possibility that it might prevent people from getting their homes back into where they were. And I just wanted to put in a request that maybe we could follow that a little bit and see what, see what, how that materializes and what that's all about.
I can maybe help with that. I know that the, the information I have, I chair ARAPA and that DEQ is part of this. And it may not, it may be unrelated to what you're hearing, Counselor Woodrow, but I can't say that there's another part of this that it, when it comes to under abatement issues and how, for example, ash is removed because of the content, because the, some of those contents may have asbestos removal requirements. So that's, that's kind of a, an issue right now. I know that ARAPA is, is more stringent than DEQ. But I don't want to get the court, the horse before the cart because the ARAPA board is going to deal with that and write up a policy that is, and it hasn't been approved, it's been discussed so that ARAPA doesn't end up being more stringent than DEQ. They can't be less stringent, but, but we don't want to necessarily be on the overzealous side of being stringent. So it prevents people from getting, getting in there in a reasonable amount of time and be able to work through that without running into these big roadblocks.
I, I think that may be part of it, but I think there's more, there's more in the same area. And I can't remember exactly. I just remember briefly seeing that there was a concern about either, either use or protection of those lands that would prevent people from getting back in there to rebuild. And that was a concern that I, I'd like to see us at least be aware of what's going on.
Yeah, it could be unrelated, but of course it's way outside our jurisdiction, but, but I get it.
But it's related to, we've got people down here, you know, hot and dry at the moment. So.
Yeah. Was that all Counselor Woodrow? I, I see, yeah, Counselor Moore. Okay, Counselor Moore, go ahead.
Well, that's just what I was going to say. That's a Lane County issue. I understand being aware, but we don't really have any jurisdiction over that particular situation. But I do understand that we were looking at doing a temporary allowing of mobile homes to park. You know, that, I thought that was coming up at this meeting. So is that coming up in the near meeting, in the near future?
Counselor Moore, I believe we have that scheduled for the 19th of October.
Okay. All right. That's what I need to know. Thank you.
Okay, I think we can move on. Yes. All right. So next item, Neil.
Next item is no business from the city manager. Do we have any business from the city attorney?
No business from the city attorney. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are adjourned. Have a great evening. Be safe.
Night, everybody.